This is the agenda of the regular board meeting. The President Board of Trustees, Village of Burnham, for County Illinois. Today is March 12th, 2019. At this time, I will ask the clerk to call the board.
Trustee Cap?
Here.
Trustee Bonner?
Present.
Trustee Garcia?
Here.
Trustee Greer?
Here.
Trustee Richardson?
Here.
That's the former, former president and leader of Trustee Greer today.
............................................................
Are there any two or corrections of the minutes of the regular board meeting that were filed on February 26, 2019? Any corrections to make to the minutes? Again, now I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2019.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 26, 2019.
That's the motion, I'll go by trustee Claybrook to approve the minutes. Give me a second, please.
Thank you.
Second by trustee Richardson, with court take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Present.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed, yes, approved. Before we open the meeting for the public, anyone has an thing to say? You can say it at that time. If not, we will move ahead with the agenda and the items that are important. It's like we need to hear them and to, you know, be able to hear it. This time, I would ask for a motion to open the meeting for the public.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Give me a second. Don't let me do this in a minute.
Okay. I'm trying to get the board in.
Second by trustee Greer, with court take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes.
Motion passed. Abandoned public comments. Abandoned public comments.
Hello?
And if you have something you want to say.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm John Heidu. About a year ago, you told us that you're going to raise the water rates to facilitate the loan from the EPA. It seemed like time just went by here. That was the headliner on the water rate ordinance. We were hurting so bad financially and all you. The seniors' rates went up four times. Our rates have doubled in that time. One would think there might be layoffs, no raises, firing people, whatnot, like any other business would run. Well, most of it, that happened on May 1st is when the rates skyrocketed, okay? A lot of few people in here don't know, is that same May 1st? I understand there are an awful lot of raises given to employees and village of Burnham. If you can respond after I'm done, I'll make two more quick points. Maybe you can respond to that.
Well, I believe that any raises that were given to the employers, I believe they are contract, that union contract, and we mandated by law, by state law, to do that, or whatever raise that was.
Does the trustee and the village of, uh, Village Works employees included in that?
Only if, I mean, only if they, I mean, the trustee, elected officials cannot receive a raise.
No, no, I'm talking about you guys. Treasurer, there are several employees got the raises. Have the Village Works and the Treasurer, were they part of the union?
No.
Okay, because the Treasurer, I'll get back to this in a second. I just want to finish up the last two points, because I want to run out of three minutes. Okay, with all due respect. The next one I want to make, you guys passed three resolutions. I guess you changed the name of that. You're expecting three questions to be on the next ballot?
It's not relevant.
Well, you determine whatever you want, but you passed one of those term limits, which you have started in 2021 for some reason, and not immediately. What, you just determine you want to be, I forget the actual term, but you like to be, do things immediately, trying to keep up with times? Well, second part of that was the free city sticker goes to a 62 to 64-year-old. Resolution was dropped in seniors' age, seniors' age 62, 64. A lot of you guys don't know, but there's a little plaque out there giving the mayor an award that came in 2012. He was 57 at that time. That would make him 63, 64 now. He qualified for the free city sticker.
Well, you know what?
Do you not?
I mean, if you feel, I mean, if you think-
I'm pointing out, would you guys have voted on it?
I mean, if you feel that I would be that meatless, I mean, to do that, then I would-
Do you go by for the city sticker?
You know what, I give you my sticker. You know what, I give it to you.
Okay.
If you think I'd be that meatless to sell out this to you-
You know what, you know what? I'm not about meat tonight. I'm representing all the residents.
No, you don't have to represent-
Please not look at me with this. This is about the residents. I'm not here to argue, Mayor. I'm not here to argue. Fact is that you would get one. Also, John Cap, you're a veteran. Resolution number three gives veterans a free city sticker? That would mean that you would get one too.
They're not resolutions, they're questionnaires on the ballot, though.
But if they pass, you're a veteran, so you would-
No, no, it's only-
I'm worried about a village sticker.
It's only a questionnaire.
How many people love going in and paying for a city sticker? They're getting free ones with the past resolution.
It's not, it's not a past resolution.
I said, actually, it's a questionnaire on the ballot. It's a questionnaire on the ballot. If it passes, you get a, you get a free city sticker, right, John?
It has to be ordered on by the board as an ordinance anyway. It's only a questionnaire on the ballot.
I believe that if it passes, if it passes, yes or no, will we vote on it on April 2nd? My last, hey, my last point, we'll get back to the, to the raises too in a second, but last point I want to ask, the loan. How's the loan going with EPA?
Well, we have not heard anything from them. We haven't gotten about anything from them.
Okay, so you have-
I'm afraid, I'm afraid one of the reasons that we have not heard back from them-
You what?
I said, one of the reasons that I'm thinking we have not heard back from them, I mean, that they want us to raise the rates even higher than they already now. And I already told them we aren't going to do that, so.
Is that the last, is that your final response to this question? I'll give you one more chance, Mayor. Because, Mayor, I'm trying, I'm trying to be fair and honest.
You know what, I'm, your time is by the way.
No, you, I guess why I asked you not to interrupt me, sir. My last question I have for you, I have a memo here from the EPA. I've been contacting the EPA. I have a memo here from Michael Layden that was put on your desk last week of October of last year. I'm sure you're familiar with it. I understand many of the trustees have read the thing, but I know you're familiar with it. I'm just wondering exactly, are you holding, they're waiting for your response to this letter. I got a copy of it, if you like. I can give you a copy. Can I give you a copy? You can maybe email them tonight or give them a call. He's waiting here.
We have people working on that. We don't need you to do that.
He's waiting. I got this from four years. I know I got it, so I know you got it. Can you respond to us about it? You're holding up a response to the EPA.
No, we don't need you to get it, but we got people working on it.
Okay. Understand, Mayor? Mayor, Michael Layden, the, Kim Biggs from the EPA, she's a public relations lady. And the CBNS Dorothy Tucker are all this, so just to let you know. Thank you. Thank you.
Look, we had to put up with this all the time.
I'm the bad guy. Everyone, you people agree with me. Go ahead, Jer.
I had no intention of even saying anything tonight, but I would just like to say that.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Cherry Hunter. When it comes to raises, one of the loopholes you get around giving yourself raises is by raising your expense account, which you do each appropriations, and you guys don't keep records for those expense accounts, and you just get checks for it and you don't turn in receipts. So I'm gonna go ahead to Johnson, when you said you didn't get a raise, you gave yourself raises. You just did it in a loophole, which is very dishonest.
Well, you know what? I mean, we've had people that worked here. They didn't do any work while they were there. They don't owe them work.
There it is again.
Say another question.
Did I say it with the truth, or did I not say the truth? You didn't deny it.
I thank God they got him.
You didn't deny it.
Say another question. Hallelujah. Say another question.
I just want to know when are we going to get the new water meetings so we can pay for what we actually use?
You know what, we're going to address that a little bit later in the meeting.
Can I have your unnamed, state your name for the record?
Deborah Gadsen.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any other public comments?
I'd like to go back to, I'm sorry we keep bringing this up, Mayor, but it's like been a year. We've had increased rates. We're not seeing any progress on this, and he, in fact-
I'm going to address that a little bit later in the meeting.
He, in fact, does have that letter that says, waiting for your answer.
Okay, I will address that a little bit later in the meeting. Are there any other questions?
Can you state your name on the ballot?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat Olson. And with the surcharge, the $10 per month, that should have brought in quite a bit of revenue, if, if we are indeed collecting water rates.
Triple your surcharge.
All right, thank you. Are there any other public comments? I'll ask for a motion to close the meeting for the public. I'm going to ask for a motion to close the meeting for the public. A motion to close by trustee Claybrook, you close the meeting for the public. So we have a second?
I'll second.
Court take the roll, please.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Bonner?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Claybrook?
Yes. Motion passed, meeting not closed for the public, thank you. And I'd like to say good evening and thank everyone for coming today. And we have some important items on the agenda we would like to share with the community. And we want to, we want you to see and hear that first hand. And some people, some people are under the impression that we're trying to hide things if we're not being transparent. But there's nothing to hide. You elected me 14 years ago, and I thank you, and I thank you. Whatever it is that people take care of, Burnham is in good hands, and you've got my word on it. You've got my word on it, okay? Regardless of what anybody says, regardless of what anybody tells you, regardless of what they put out on the screen, Burnham is in good hands, and you've got my word on it.
Sure.
Period. The next thing is that we are continuing to work on a real estate deal on torn, I mean, 14512 torn. And that is going to become a restaurant. So I'm asking people of the community to support them, so we can have a nice restaurant in our community. So maybe we can hire a few people from this community that they would, maybe some of the kids could work there. We anticipate that will happen this summer, this summer 2019. So we ask everybody to support for that. The next thing is that we do have, I mean, an audit report here this evening. And I will get up and explain the village finances in April 30th, 2018. And Mr. Bolson is here to represent an expansion of an economic development plan. We are in the process of selling Mr. Bolson some pins, some properties. And that will generate, I mean, a hundred thousand dollar extra. We will take a part of that money and go ahead and buy the software, put water meters. And we'll do that very soon, very soon. We will start that process. And the body software and the other software will have to be put together to make sure that they sync together. Then we will start preparing the broken meter, the one that's outside. We can get to those either, and those are mainly on the east side of town. And some of the people that have meters over here, and want them, we're going to try to get those done. And we do not have to wait until we get the loan to start that, and we will do that. And we will do that, and that will be very, very soon. So I would say in April, we will be moving ahead on that and move as fast as we can. We're also going to try to change the commercial meters, because they use mold water. So we want to make sure we get that as accurate as possible. And I will be the first to admit, you know, our system is broken, but it needs reform. Right, it needs help, it needs adjustments, and we are going to take care of that, and we are going to. And I know we've been trying to get that approved, but EPA does not really, not moving as fast as we would like for them to move, but we can't tell them what to do. I don't have the authority to tell them what to do. We can only request and ask them, you know, if they would do this for us. So far, they have not given us, you know, the final okay. We got people calling them all the time.
Why?
I mean, you can do that.
Why have they given you that?
But you put it on your business.
Not my business.
Yeah. Especially yours. Number one, a lot of times people come to these meetings, and you would think that they are saints. I mean, based on the stuff that they've said, I, oh, God, if you knew. God, if you knew.
Mayor, no attacks, please.
I mean, God, if you knew. I mean, if you, sir-
No attacks, please. He's a resident.
I mean, sir, if you, if you would let us help you, if you would let us help you, and Cook County-
Help EPA.
And Cook County is-
EPA is waiting for your response.
And Cook County is holding a $700 of your money, they've been holding it for nine years.
Of my money?
Yeah.
How do you know that?
And so if people, if you would work with us-
How do you know that?
And if you would work with us, and work with this administration, we would try to help you rather than hurt you.
How do you know they have my money?
I mean, I know a whole lot of things.
Yeah, you-
That's why I'm sitting ready in the center, okay?
Yes, sir.
So it's my job to know a little bit more than the average person. Otherwise, there would be no reason for you to ask me to think if I don't know anything.
Just want you to be honest.
You're a legend in your own mind.
The other thing is that, as I said, we will begin the process of working on the meters. And we do not sleep on the jobs. We do not sleep on the jobs. All right. And it's hard to lose if you have anything to say.
I do not have.
You do.
I do not have anything, ma'am.
Okay, it's hard to lose, so.
I don't have anything for two meetings in a row.
Look at public education, how safe it is, the way I've got trustee here.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have a letter to the Honorable Mayor Robert, Mayor Robert E. Paul, and the members of the Board of Trustees, from Chief Anthony Hopper. It's in reference to a grant award. I am thrilled to once again announce that the Burnham Fire Department has been awarded a grant by the Federal Emergency Management Agency Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program to pay for 95% of the purchase price of a new self-contained breathing apparatus. The total price of the new equipment is $141,583, and its details on the invoice included with its letter. The federal government share will be $134,841.7. The grant requires the village to contribute 5% of the purchase price, which is $6,741.30.
All right, the five chief is here?
Yeah.
Could you get up and, and explain the significance of it and?
Well, the, the federal government has a very highly competitive, highly selective grant award program that they award every year. And the village, assistance of our village administrators, applied for a grant to replace our 15-year-old self-contained breathing apparatus system, which are basically air packs that everyone sees the firefighters wear. And we were awarded that grant in the amounts that trustee Greer mentioned. And we were very thankful to, like I said, the assistance of the administration to helping us get that grant. It's very selective, it's very hard to get, and it's a lot of work. And I thank everybody for helping us out get that, and we look forward to the day when the equipment gets delivered. Thank you.
On the other hand, we would like to congratulate our five chief, you know, for working hard, you know, for the residents of Burnham. And again, we are making progress, administration's making progress, and of course, we got naysayers, we got haters, you know, doing all kinds of stuff, but we doing okay. We doing okay. Right, we are continuing to do that. Thank you. Thank you very much. See you, trustee.
Burnham Fire and Medical Report. This is for the month of February 2019. Fire calls, there were 11. There were eight during the day and three during the night. Ambulance calls, they were very busy. 39 calls, 24 during the day and 15 during the night. Just want to remind anyone that is interested, during timeship is offering CPR first aid classes. You can get your certification, and the classes will be from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. They start in March and goes through November the 20th. Registered, registered now, space is limited. For more information, call 708-596-6040, extension 3170. Save your home. Are you unemployed or earning less than before? Are you behind on your mortgage payments? Do you need to leave your home to a short sale or a deed in lieu of foreclosure? And we know that a lot of people are in between jobs, and some have lost their jobs. So if you need mortgage help, there is a one-day seminar. It's going to be Saturday, March 30th, 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At the South Island Community Center. That's 501 East 170th Street in South Island, Illinois. Three parteries. So if you got to agree with you, photo ID, two recent, based, two recent statements, and some other things. But if you're interested, please see me after the meeting, and I would like to share this information with you. Just a reminder that we do have line dancing on Saturday mornings. It is fabulous. Lots of fun, good exercise. It's from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Every Saturday morning. Come on and join us at the Community Center on Tuesday. And just a last reminder, there's a reminder card that is going around. And these are a few tips. Don't buy from unfamiliar companies. Always ask for and receive written material before any offer of charity. Always check out your company that you're dealing with, with your local consumer protection agency. Always obtain a person's name, business identity, telephone number, the state that they're calling for, mailing address, and business license number before you do any transaction. And before you give any money to charity or make an investment, find out what percentage of the money is paid in commission, and what percentage actually goes to charity or investments. Before you send money, always ask yourself a simple question. What guarantee you are willing to have that this solicitor will give, will use my money in the manner that agreed upon? And last but not least, don't pay in advance for any service. Pay only after they are delivered. And just want to remind seniors, anyone that is over the age of 60, that you are interested in having your lawn serviced. There's that senior lawn service. If you would like to know more about this, you can call the Thornton Township, 708-596-6040, and that's extension 4016. And this is a service that seniors can receive if you're over, if you're a senior citizen, over the age of 60, living in a single-family home with nobody able, nobody there to help you. You can receive this weekly service, weather permitting. So it's, it's a good deal. And last but not least, if you know anyone, again, there are people that are financially hurting. There are people who is in need of the food service. Thornton Township has a wonderful food program, and it's located in Harvey. So if you are need, or you know someone that is in need of food service, you can please see me afterwards. If you don't feel comfortable going to Harvey, I will take you there, assist you there. It's a wonderful, wonderful program. Thank you.
Trustee Greer, thank you for that. Public works and buildings.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I just want to say it's good to see a packed house and thank everyone for coming out, you know, this evening, no matter what side of the coin, it's good to see a packed house. And we have a few things. Public Works was doing general cleaning throughout the village, picking up trash. I witnessed, you know, a state torrent yesterday. And also, they had the streets we were out on there today. That's all I have.
Also, may I add to trustee Claybrook's report that if, if Burnham, for whatever reason, that your street is, accumulates the leaves in the gutters, please keep the gutters clean so that the water can go down the sewer drain and not fill up on the street.
And also, you know, trash, and I know you don't fill it, it boils out and litter out on the street or on the curb, but if you could help us to pick that up, that would be a big help to the, you know, to help our parents and the village. And we plan to, you know, continue to improve that, keep your property back up. And also, with the vacant properties in Burnham, people are purchasing them, they flipping them. And, you know, we even had a property sell for $104,000, I believe. I think that's a good thing. It comes back up, it's been quite a few years since the market made that happen. So again, thank you, trustee Claybrook. Ordinance evolution, and plan to trust you guys here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action to pass or not pass ordinance number 2019-001, an ordinance vacated portions of dedicated right-of-way streets and alleys within Mr. Bolson's business property located in the village of Burnham.
Now, before we take any action on this, before a motion and everything is made on it, we're going to ask, maybe show the, if we can turn the lights out. Is that going to work with everyone?
All right, everybody, I'm Tony Schmidt. I'm president of Mr. Bolson corporate reader, Mr. Mayor and all the trustees. Thanks for having us. I'll try and make this as quick as we can. The old, the old saying that a picture worth a thousand words. We thought this might be good to give you just a quick overview of who we are, where we started, and where we've gone over the years and where we're heading. Just started in 1980. I lived right in Lansing, calling stone out of the quarry right down in Thornton. Everybody probably knows about that. We've turned in over the years to the largest waste hauling company in the United States. We haul, we haul garbage from transportation, windmills all across the country. We've grown, I started in 1980, or 1995, April 1st. I've come up with my 24th anniversary. We had 37 trucks in Burnham there, and that was it. And we're pushing, we just finished our license plate renewal. We're 1,342 trucks today. This will show you exactly where we started in 1989 when we came in. The green shaded area dollars is what we had in 1989, and we'll just walk you through the years. So the green now in '92 is what we added in '92. '93, you can see what we added. '98, we added just a few lots there. '99, big piece. 2006, a little bit there. And you can see how big our footprint is getting. 2010, we added some more. 2012, a little bit. 2013, quite a bit. 2015, we're adding some more there, filling in all the blanks. 2018, we just finished up. And this is what we're proposing for 2019 now. So the area in green is all the property from the village right now that we would like to purchase. That's basically alleys and the streets that are unused right now. Pretty easy to see. This shows all our buildings. If anybody's been back there, you understand, you know, you've already seen what we're doing, but this gives you an overview of all the buildings that we own right there, right now. This is our body shop. That was the very first building that we started in. It's been added on two, three times since we started in 1987, I think he was there. Next one there.
Jumped up, sorry.
Building three there, that's our trailer shop. I think everybody knows where that's been. That's basically put right up against where the church used to be. We've added on to that building twice since we started that project. Building four is our current corporate office. We run everything through that right now. Building five is our tire shop in Wash Bay, automated wash bay, and we do all our tire work in that. Building six is a storage facility, like a warehouse. We just store extra parts and things in there. And building seven is, is a warehouse, and that's where the expansion is going. That was the old general machine. If anybody remembers that, you could see the sign from Torrance years ago. We basically redid the entire thing, all new roof, all new doors, all new siding, you know, made it new. And our current expansion is basically on the east side of that property. We want to extend that building 40 feet to the east. This kind of shows our nationwide footprint. A lot of you people only even know that we're basically a nationwide company, you know, so this gives you a rough idea of what we have, what we have all across the country. Quite a few employees. We've got 1,872 employees today as we speak, and this has all grown from Burnham. You know, as you saw in the beginning there, we didn't have hardly anything, and we've grown this thing. It's worked out pretty good for us to be able to grow our business and be able to just keep growing with inside this footprint. This just shows a quick authenticity of our, of our group. We've got a little bit of everybody here in the Illinois area. We don't, we don't care who we hire. We're neutral on that 100%. So once again, this is a proposal we're looking at, uh, this gives you a little bit better view of it. Um, we think that this is something that's gonna work out pretty good for the village as well. Uh, the benefit that we have right now, the reason we're doing this is, is a few things, we're gonna increase our fabrication capabilities, we're gonna add, uh, a couple of drive-through bays for tractors and trailers for maintenance there. Right now, the maintenance is down in the other building closer to the houses, we're gonna move all that away from the houses, uh, further north to get all the noise and stuff away, and then that old building will turn into executive offices. So we're hoping that it'll make it nicer for the, everybody who lives around us to hear a little bit less noise. Uh, the, the warehouse is gonna increase by about forty percent, and we're basically moving it out forty feet. Uh, again, the maintenance office will turn into executive offices, and we'll have some parking and stuff all along there, but most of the truck parking is gonna be to the left side. Uh, as part of this project, we're gonna install another water, uh, fire hydrant. Uh, everybody came out and looked this, this project over pretty close, and realized that we're kind of in a bad way if something happens, so we're gonna pay the cost of putting another fire hydrant in, which could also handle the homes on the, uh, on the east side there as well. And then, again, we can, uh, we can expand our corporate office right there. Something that, uh, that we're kind of proud of too is, uh, we just made magazine here, we've made it a few years and never really paid attention to it, but we're among the top five hundred for hire carriers in the country. Uh, when this came out, we were actually number ninety-six or ninety-seven, I think it is, uh, with our truck count at, at eleven fifty-seven, remember that says, and we're thirteen forty-one now, so. Your little town of Burnham here is actually, uh, uh, headquarters for us, and every single truck that we have all across the country, every one of them says Burnham Online on it, no matter where they are, so we, we think that's kind of cool. Excellent. Uh, we try to be a pretty good partner with the village here, uh, we always donate to the Back to School event, uh, we try to bring something down at Christmas. Uh, we've paid quite a few permits and fees and things over the years. Um, our taxes are pushing three hundred thousand dollars a year, so you can see that there, we're a player in this town. Uh, another thing that we think is very important is all these properties that you see in the blue, in the green, and in the red, are properties that were not on the tax roll before. So after this acquisition, because of all our acquisitions prior, and this, uh, this street purchase, all these properties will be added to the tax roll for this village, and you'll be able to collect on that, um, on into the future. Uh, we basically, uh, the village chose an appraiser, we hired the appraiser, had that done, uh, came back, the full appraisal value was a hundred thousand dollars, we're not looking to chisel that at all. Uh, we paid five thousand dollars for the engineering fee, the twenty thousand dollars for the hydrant, the appraiser was a thousand dollars, and then we had to have it surveyed, so all told, we've got a hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars invested into this project so far, if, if you sell it to us. That's it?
Thank you very much.
Hope that wasn't a fake.
Yes, I'm sure that, um, the legend was pretty hard to read as far as, uh, the, uh, public utilities. I know that in our alleys, that we have a lot of sewer systems running through that, and I'm not sure, uh, what the plans would be to, uh, to make that adaptable to your business. But if it is completed over, who's going to be responsible for busting up the conduit and getting to that access for those public utilities if need be?
If I leave the sewer just down, that would not be affected, right, is that correct, Dave?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you set up a plan?
Hi, Dave Schelling, Robinson Engineering, I'm the village engineer.